In a republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please Sue.
Alderman Caldwell?
Here.
Alderman Couch?
Here.
Alderman Joe Chris?
Here.
Alderman John Stupi, absent. Alderman Huff?
Here.
Alderman Donald Stupi?
Here.
Alderman Frank?
Here.
Alderman Lizzica?
Here.
Mayor, we have a form.
Thank you. Cool agenda?
Moving to approve.
Making motion to approve?
Thank.
We did that.
Randy, you might have been louder than that.
It doesn't matter.
But it doesn't matter.
We're all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we, uh, personal appearance, first we have Mr. Jeff Schroeder from UC Kane.
From the accounting.
Our accounting firm will present, uh, the board with the annual audit report.
Good evening.
Evening.
It's good to see you all again this year. I tell you, we really appreciate the chance to be able to come and do the audit for the city. I think, I think I recognize a couple of new faces. If that's right. If anybody hasn't heard my, my talk about the reports, then this'll be some exciting, uh, few minutes of your meeting tonight. I wanted to start out by explaining that in your audit report, what we have is, is two reports, uh, from our firm as the auditors. The first report is a report on the financial statements of the city. It starts out by explaining that the responsibility for those financial statements is the city. It's the city's responsibility. My job as the auditor is to give an opinion on whether or not those statements are fairly stated. So, we do explain in that report the standards that I adhered to while I was conducting my audit, and an explanation that the financial statements are prepared on a modified cash basis. A little bit different than generally accepted accountants, but that's common for, uh, cities that's used in this size throughout the savings area. Uh, it goes on then to explain that it is my opinion that these financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects in accordance with that modified cash basis opinion. That's the technical language that's in there, but basically that's an unmodified opinion, a clean opinion. That's the one that you want. Uh, the report then goes on to explain that whenever you conduct your audit in accordance with government auditing standards, that you also will report on internal controls and compliance. So, that's the second report that I'll get to in just a minute. Uh, the, um, the last part of the report explains that there is some information that's in these financial statements. This additional information is not part of the financial statements that we're opining on. So, basically, it's just kinda carving out a couple of pieces, the management's discussion analysis, and some of the pension plan schedules. It says that our opinion doesn't actually cover those, but we've looked at it and that we didn't see anything that looked out of place. Uh, the second report is the one I was talking about with the internal controls and compliance. We don't actually give an opinion on your internal controls, but in order to be able to conduct the audit, we have to understand how they work. So, we go through the internal controls that we believe have a significant impact on the preparation of these financial statements. And, and while we're trying to understand how those work, if we see anything that we consider to be a deficiency, this is where we would report it. So, even though we don't give an opinion on the internal controls, we would report on anything that we consider to be a deficiency. And we explained that we don't have any deficiencies this year.
Can you start, Ellen?
Yeah.
Just kidding.
So, the, the second part of that report is, uh, on our testing for compliance. We're looking at the city's compliance, there's a lot of different laws, regulations, contracts, grant agreements, anything that has a financial impact to it. And, uh, this is where if we had found any non-compliance, we would report it. And we do report in there that we found, we found no instances of non-compliance, uh, that would need to be included.
I was in that microphone.
Yep.
You could leave it down and make them come back up again.
Yeah.
Hopefully that worked. The financial statements then follow. Uh, I, I know that you all review the financial statements as you go throughout the year. I know you're aware of them, so I don't wanna stand here and spend another forty-five minutes of your board meeting kinda reading back to you your financial information. What I would consider important is, um, uh, information to pass along to you is whether or not we made any significant adjustments to those numbers from the time that you got them at September thirty until we got them to the final audit report. We did recommend a few adjustments, very common. Uh, none of the suggestions that we offered for changes were significant. Um, I don't consider any of them to be material. So, therefore, the numbers that you all were relying on, basing information on, working with budgets, in my opinion, that information was materially accurate as we, as you went. The rest of the report is pretty much just updating for the numbers that, uh, have taken place during fiscal year two thousand fifteen, with one exception, I'll just point out that, um, there is a significantly expanded disclosures related to your pension plans. Uh, there were new rules that went into effect this last year that we've implemented with this report. Uh, I believe it's pages fifty-seven to sixty-three. Uh, it's, um, it's highly exciting and entertaining information in there. Uh, but it actually, it, it, it's pretty dry, but, uh, it, it's good information if you're interested. Uh, in years past, if you failed to remit the amount of payments to the pension plan that the pension plan said you needed to, that would result in a liability. And you've never had that. You've always paid in what you've been required to pay in. And, uh, with this rule change that I was talking about, now you are required to report the total amount of the potential liability that could be out there someday when everybody retires, oh, and offset with the assets that have been paid into the plan so that the plan holds to, to invest and then retire those, um, those obligations someday. That's the new reporting rules that have gone into effect. Since you're a modified cash basis entity, we don't report those assets and liabilities anyway, but the footnote disclosures are here. So, that's what that information, there, there's two separate disclosures, one for your, your general pension plan and one for your police, uh, employees, 'cause their plan is slightly different. Uh, all the information is in there about both of those. It, it explains your funded status, uh, the potential liabilities, uh, how those numbers were developed. Uh, and all that was prepared by loggers. Um, we evaluated the information that we got from them. We evaluated how they put their numbers together. Uh, we examined the credibility of the companies that worked to put that numbers together, and in our opinion, this is accurate, and therefore, that's in the report and covered under our opinion. So, like I said, that's something new that you haven't had in there before, so I just wanted to let you know if you're comparing to last year's report, that's what's different about it, and that's why it's there. So, the rest of the report, like I said, is just updating the numbers, uh, for two thousand fifteen. Um, you know, we, we addressed internal controls. We had no suggestions to make. Um, you know, I, I come up here every year and say we had no recommendations, no suggestions. You know, I, I hope you, um, don't take that to just mean that we're just issuing the report and we're moving right along. Uh, you know, a lot of our cities, we do issue a lot of recommendations. The, the gentleman who, who was the lead auditor on this job, uh, left this, left your city and went to do the audit of the city over in Illinois, and he, uh, has already written eight recommendations for them. So, we're not afraid to let you know whenever we see things that we think need to change. It's just that year after year, things seem to be working here as far as your internal control structure, and, and we think that it's adequate in, in doing the job. So, uh, that's why we keep saying we have no recommendations to make. So, uh, I've, again, I like to point out every year, I think most of you have heard me say this, um, that when you're not here, and we are here working with the folks that are here in City Hall every day, uh, everybody has always treated us very professionally, uh, very polite. Um, whenever we ask for something, they usually jump to get it. Um, so, I like to pass that along whenever I see that the case. Uh, some cities I go to, I just kinda skip this part of the, the meeting. But, but no, that is the case here. Everybody, uh, always treats us in a very professional manner, and I figured that's something that would be good for you all to know how things work when you're not here.
How many days do you spend here?
Oh, this year, I think we had three auditors. Three days or four, three days?
Four.
Four days? Okay. It's usually between three and four. I think this year, because of all of the new, uh, footnote disclosures, we had a lot more testing that we had to do. But, uh, I think Sue sends us information in advance, and we start crunching numbers from the office so that we're ready to hit the ground running when we get here. And then, after we head back to the office, there's usually a handful of little things that still need to be wrapped up, and that's when we draft the report from, from our office and, and the wrap-up procedures. So, like I said, three, three auditors, four days, plus however many days we had before and after fieldwork.
In addition to which, they are always available to us for advice and counsel, and they're very responsive. Good, good to work with.
We try to help. We figure in the long run, it might be kinda self-serving, because if everything's done, uh, you know, I's dotted and T's crossed, that makes our job a little easier down the road. But, uh, still, we think it's, it's, it's helpful, uh, as things come up. You know, I, uh, I don't know, most firms, I think, probably send a bill for that. Maybe we should, but we don't. We just, uh, figure that's part of doing the job, is just be there available if you have anything come up during the year that we can help with.
Any other questions for Jeff? Great. Well, I just, again, I guess we say every year, thank you Sue and the staff and everybody involved. It's one of those, thank God we have the quality of people that we have, and it's certainly a compliment to you that, that the board doesn't have to spend any time on this or addressing any issues, because it's, every year it comes out this way, and, and, uh, that's, that's always a great thing. We, I guess we've certainly grown to expect it, but, uh, we certainly appreciate it, so, thank you.
Kind of a blessing, isn't it?
Yeah.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Coming to, to visit with you all, this is a pleasure. Some of the board meetings we go to, it's, uh, it almost needs a little volcano cane to come with it, but, uh, but no, it's always a pleasure to work with you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, dear.
Kara Burke from Saint Genevieve Downtown Renewal. Got a nice report in your package.
Good evening. Actually, got my stuff together in time this week, which was a big plus for me. So, I included a report. Basically, I wanted you guys to have a copy of all-day event for two thousand sixteen, which is the, um, majority of what I included in that report. Um, but the first thing you'll notice on there is that we have finally launched our sponsorship and partnership campaign, our big capital campaign to try and raise some money to do some of the projects and things that we wanna do downtown. Um, I did include the list of goals that we have, which we do have a goal, which is, we have set pretty lofty goals, and we know that, but we are, um, hoping to get a hundred percent of the city board of Aldermen behind us, um, within, and we're not doing any specific amounts or anything. The sponsorship program that we did started out as a tiered program from twenty dollars up to a thousand. We are, um, going to several different businesses and owners. The board has split everybody up and made ten contacts within the, in the downtown district, and ten contacts outside the downtown district, um, and then, and then some. Um, I just wanted to let you know, we literally launched this partnership last week, so we're still very new in it. And so far, we have signed up twenty-one members, have paid in the downtown district, and we're expecting another thirty-one paid before the end of next week. Um, so, we've already hit fifty-two businesses, um, in a week and a half. So, I'm very proud of our board. We've been working really hard at this. Um, wanted to translate that to volunteer hours, forty-four volunteer hours in the past two weeks from our board, um, working on this. And, um, IRS gives the volunteer hours twenty-two, twenty-two dollars and fifty cents is what they value a volunteer hour at, so we're already at a thousand dollars, almost near a thousand dollars, just on this project alone. Um, our board is a very strong, hard-working board, and the amount of hours that are, some of our board puts in is, um, unbelievable. And so, I just wanna shout out to our board. We do have a new board member, Casey Benner, uh, was just voted on board. She lives on Fourth Street, and she's been very helpful in, um, her and Georgia Honor Men hitting the streets and the pavement and getting out to the merchants and talking with them. Um, we have several very active board members. My goal is hopefully next month or in April that we'll have the board actually come in, so you guys can all meet the board and know who is all on the board, but faces with names, et cetera. Um, you'll see on the list that there's the, all the confirmed, um, events for two thousand sixteen. We just went ahead and did an overview. We do have a new event this year that we're working on, um, with the Derby Days. We're gonna do a Run for the Roses, um, off of the Kentucky Derby, so we're kind of excited to see what that will bring. Mint Juleps, and I think we're actually gonna try and do some stick horse races. So, um, we'll see how that goes. And then, I'm also working with a car club to see about doing a cruisin' on the square, um, later in September. It's a very new event. Um, they, we've exchanged a few emails and met once, so it's just something that they're, they're throwing out there, like Perryville's cruisin' that they do once a month there. They don't wanna do anything quite that extreme yet, start out small, one, maybe three next year, and move it on from there. So, um, let's see. We do have five new businesses downtown. Um, one of our goals with our, um, partnership campaign, so we set up two separate campaigns. The sponsorship is for people outside of the district, um, and the partnership is for the businesses within the district. And we put in a perks plan. They get an IT for three thirty-minute, free thirty-minute IT consultation to see what their online footprint is. Um, I have a, a good friend that's volunteering his time to do that for us. And then, it includes all of our sixteen signature events, our walk flags, all the printed materials, um, the expanded, um, media coverage. Uh, we have a new website that we're launching, hopefully tomorrow, if I get the stuff I need to get done for it tonight. And, um, it just helps to get more things out there and have more things streamlined. So, we've been working really hard. Um, our goal is to have a hundred percent of any of the new businesses coming in, and all five of the new businesses, um, with the exception of one, just 'cause I haven't gotten in there to talk to them, have already signed up for the membership. So, we're feeling pretty, pretty strong about it, so.
How many businesses?
Fifty-two.
Yes, we've contacted fifty-two so far. We, we've literally had only one that said no, but then we went back and we actually, they ended up signing up as partners, so it was good. It's, it's been a good experience. It's, I think they've been very supportive. Thanks.
Thank you. This is, uh, this is great.
Thanks. I said it, I feel like it's my wife's work in a brochure, and some people write books, and I write brochures, so.
Thank you. Well, Mark?
Okay, uh, there was a federal declaration of a disaster for the December and January flooding. Um, we attended preliminary meeting with FEMA and CMO personnel. Um, we, our, our, our regular hour, you know, work doesn't count, so we only get overtime, so we really didn't have anything in terms of reimbursable expenses, um, except for the cleanup on Little Rock Road on the north side of the gates. Uh, would be cover, coverable under a pilot program that they have, uh, where you can count regular hours. So, I will be applying for reimbursement for those costs under that pilot program. Met with the park board. Last time I mentioned to you our meeting with the county commission, uh, the park board, uh, is excited about the opportunity. Uh, and they're looking to tap the Parks and Recreation Department at the, at CMO University to see if there's some students who are working in that park planning, getting their Parks and Recreation degree, uh, they could devote some time to developing a, a playground plan. Yeah, I'm not familiar with park planning, but I know there's standards that they use based on population and demographics and to decide kinda what the right mix of things are. So, uh, we'll be, we'll, it's not a major time-consuming project, but it might be a good class project for, for one of the, one of the students. Uh, we submitted, Jenny Brettke's reporting here, and mine includes the submission, submission of the bids for the Main Street hiking trail. Those have been submitted to the state. DNR's reviewing them. They won't let us do anything until they approve the plans. So, uh, we can't even initiate the process of having the poles removed. Uh, but as soon as, uh, as they approve them, we'll, we'll, we'll proceed. You know, as we were getting towards the end of the year, and the fourth quarter was coming in, Sue and I were, uh, like, really hopeful that, uh, things would go well. Sales tax has kinda met our expectations. It's, uh, but we got a little surprised on the property tax side. Uh, the assessed valuation went down. Uh, and some of that had to do with moving buildings from the tax rolls. Uh, some of it had to do with, uh, a devaluation of some of the properties, particularly properties in the, uh, industrial park. And, uh, for some reason, the mining rights, it was like four hundred thousand dollar assessment for Mississippi Lime, just disappeared. Uh, and I don't know if that was a result of a Board of Equalization decision, or, I don't know. But, uh, so, our, our real property tax, uh, assessment was significantly lower than it was, uh, prior year. And, now, what does that, how does that affect our budget? What affects it? But, you know, since we're getting point oh four seven cents per hundred, uh, it's, it's in the five thousand dollar range, not in the twenty thousand dollar range. So, it doesn't, doesn't hurt quite as badly as it sounds, but it still is, it's not what we wanted to see.
Does the county make these, uh, recommendations for this, for the, for the assessment of the property? The county does that, right?
The assessor, yes. And, uh, and she follows, uh, a set of standards that are published for the industry, so it's not arbitrary. Um, but in this case, I know three businesses appealed their assessments and got them lowered. And that's done at the Board of Equalization level. After the assessor says, "This is what I think it is," then you can go to the Board of Equalization if you, and present evidence, uh, that, that may lead them to lower the assessment. If the Board of Equalization doesn't do what you think they should've done, you can appeal it to the State Tax Commission. Uh, these were not state, there was no State Tax Commission appeal that I'm aware of. Uh, there is one pending, uh, and, but again, it's, 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 uh, for us, it's about a three thousand dollar could start being withheld pending the, the appeal. So, we'll just have to see what happens.
I'm real surprised with this. I'm real surprised.
So, with the Riverview, the Wiener Street and, and Riverview plans have also been submitted to DNR for approval, and so, we have to wait to get their approval before we can, we get on that. Uh, Petrie's on the agenda tonight. She, she's not gonna be here because, but she, she, she will be here at our next meeting. And, and one of the reasons she wanted to delay it was we had the GIS training on our new system, and, uh, it's a little premature to kinda bring it out tonight, but at our next meeting, she's gonna kinda show you what this grant has allowed us to, to, to achieve. Okay, any questions?
We also, uh, follow up to the last meeting. Uh, we did talk to some of the people to be involved in, in, um, kinda disaster relief, especially when it relates to flooding. Uh, but one of the principals was on vacation. We wanted to wait, wait for him to get back, so before we sat down. But we've talked to most of the people involved, so just as soon as I get back, we'll sit down and start working on getting something down on paper.
Can we expand it more than just flooding?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's, it will, it'll be an all-hazard emergency plan. Flooding's obviously one of the most recent concern, but we also have earthquakes and tornadoes.
Everybody that, I don't know how many people you've selected to be on the committee, but everybody on the committee probably wanted to be at each meeting, 'cause they only, some of them are only gonna represent something that occurs to, you know, one type of hazard or another.
Right, right.
So, kinda the conversation that we were having preceding this meeting was maybe kinda figure out what the core group is that would be, like, the police chief is gonna be regardless, and the fire chief, and, and then,
People that have to be involved in every.
Start with that, and then start engaging people on each individual type of event.
Right, right.
Okay, good.
Okay. Any questions? Yeah, so, Petrie. Steve, you're the only one here. Well, you see.
Well, first of all, before you, Kenny Stagger had planned to be here, uh, but he, he got called to some personnel thing. Uh, his report is here, uh, but, but he said, instead of attending this meeting, he will attend our next meeting.
So, and, um, so Steve, I guess we're, uh, what are you?
Excuse me, everyone. I'm touching on a few things. By the, last month, we had a point base water tower emptied, drained, washed out, uh, and inspected. Uh, had no deficiencies on there. Everything looked really good. Uh, while they were there, they did power wash the outside. It wasn't scheduled for that, but they did complete it, uh, while they were, while they were here. Wastewater side, uh, the rotor in the oxidation ditch, the bearing failed on the outside, which scored up the shaft that it rides on. The shaft itself is around five thousand dollars for the stub. Uh, the bearing is around two to three thousand. We were, in the beginning, we thought we were gonna have to replace that shaft. We actually took it, polished it up, had it metallized, and we were able to reuse it, um, saving thousands of dollars there. And back in service and running good at this time. Other than that, we did a lot of, a lot of moving stuff from our two facilities down there in the lower end of town. Moved it all to the water plant and moved it back, so.
Hey, Steve. What's going on in Roger Street? That water coming out of there?
It's groundwater, it's.
No, there can't be that much groundwater. It's coming from a home.
They were pumping a cistern at a house up on Roger. There was a, a large cistern, eighteen thousand gallons.
Oh, so you're talking.
Finished today, they were doing it during the day, stopping in the evening so it wouldn't freeze.
Okay, alright. Alright, yeah.
No water issue.
Okay. Yeah, that was, uh, a cistern being pumped out. Eighteen thousand gallons is what they pumped out.
Okay.
So, different, different issue, I thought you were talking about something.
I like your, uh, positive for the month. The town did not flood.
I think it is positive.
Definitely a positive.
And, we got a new roof on our wastewater plant. It was the original roof that was put in, uh, put on after the ninety-three flood. It had a few leaks in it, stuff that looks like it should've been leaking, but it wasn't. Uh, so, we caught it just in time.
You wanna touch on that Chadwell thing, with the care center?
Yeah, uh, the construction going on for the care center, they're addition there, that are putting on. Contractors had to tie onto our twelve-inch main on Chadwell with a six-inch fire line. That is why the street was closed yesterday and today.
Are they finished?
Uh, the tack was made, and they were laying pipe across the road. Uh, I don't have an update whether it was opened back up or not.
Um, I shouldn't say this negatively. Is that an appropriate amount of time to, in your opinion, to have completed that work?
They, there's other methods, you know, that are available that would've taken, you know, less time, less destructive, and, I'd just say there's other methods that could've been used.
Make it less invasive and less, what about the street? Is that gonna be back, they're in the street, right?
They're in the street, yes. One side or the other. They'll, I think they've specked five-inch thick concrete for the patch.
We have a street, we haven't actually adopted it in codes, but we have a, a street repair protocol, and we, and we gave it. repair protocol, and we, we gave it to them, and they think that according to that, it'll be in good shape.
Steve, you wanted to touch on what kind we talked about before the meeting with, with all the discussion in the news recently about Michigan and how they're lead in the water, and just explain to everybody that we don't have to, we don't have to worry about kind of issue.
Hand that question over to Ted.
Oh, all right, all right.
He'd been dealing with it recently.
We're very pleased to announce there's not a lead problem in St. Genevieve. Steve's crew's done a really good job at the water plant for, for a long time now. There was actually 20 samples taken earlier this year, and with the new federal rules on that, any of those samples that were collected at those people's residences, each one of those residents would have actually received a letter on the results of those as well. They're, they all were well below any limits that, that were required to have by, I believe, the 90, 90 percentile, I believe. So whatever the limit is, we're 90% under that. So there is no lead problem in, in St. Genevieve.
Lead appears in our water, just naturally, because of where we are.
Yeah.
But, but the issue here is the collection at the tap, because the water can be corrosive, and there's lead in the brass fittings and solder and those kinds of things for older, older homes. And, and you're saying, we tested those homes.
Yes, we test, we test for the lead in St. Genevieve. It's not the water we produce. We actually go out in the system and test the faucets in people's houses. In Missouri, they did a lead ban a few years ago that actually is in effect now. We're not even allowed to buy fittings or anything to be installed that has lead in the solder anymore. So all the fittings that are actually purchased for the last, maybe, probably two years, the, have been lead-free fittings. And Steve's crew at the water plant, Mike Holland, those, they, they test the water daily for Lengler saturated index, and that tells them what the corrosiveness of the water is, or the aggressiveness of the water is, that has the potential to leach out any of the old lead fittings. And they keep that right where it's supposed to be. There, there is absolutely no problem with lead in St. Genevieve.
Thanks, Terry. Thanks, Terry.
Any other reports from the board?
Yeah, I, I attended the Heritage Commission meeting, and happy to say, everything went well, and seemed to progress along well. So turns out, this little house here across the street is way older than anybody realized. Guy wanted to demolish it. And according to Petrie, thing goes way back into the mid-1800s, so they're gonna try to save it.
Who's gonna try to save it?
Well, the owner's still up in here. He wanted to knock it down, put a duplex up. But there's really nothing structurally wrong with the house. It just needs, really just needs cosmetics.
But he owns it, right?
He owns it, yeah. He owns it. But it is a contributing structure, and it, you know, it falls into their criteria of something that should be saved, so.
Cosmetically, I don't even know what you do with that house, just make it look better.
Is that- Well, yeah, it is, it is.
So that's a health hazard, maybe.
Only if it's disturbed.
Right.
You know. And the thing is, if he wants to tear it down, he's gonna have to disturb it. So either way, you still have to deal with it. Or he can just leave it, tie it up, so.
Listen, it's just absolutely support protecting our heritage.
Yes.
But at the same time, the property owner has got to have some rights.
I, I agree.
You know, if, if that house is bought tomorrow, right?
Right.
And we have an ordinance that says you're gonna have to abide by these regulations because the structure is a contributing structure. I got no problem with that. But if this house was bought, I don't know, 60 years ago, I got a huge problem.
Well, he hasn't, he hasn't had it that long, and we don't need to go over all of it, because it's all been said. He's amenable to it. He didn't, he wasn't pushing the issue, at least. And he seemed very receptive to the things that Petrie had to say, so, you know.
I think that's wonderful. This is, this is a really, this happens regularly.
Yes, it does.
It's a, it's a tough deal every time.
But the nice thing is, this one was not controversial, yet.
Yeah.
So I'm just, I'm just giving my opinion on what happened. I agree with you, Tom.
The issue is still controversial.
It can be.
Sure is. I mean, it just is.
Yeah.
If I wanna, well-
Yeah, we can go on forever about it.
No, not really. I just, it's really pretty cut and simple. I, I just, I'm glad that the homeowner is working with the Heritage Commission.
Right, and that's all I'm saying.
Anybody else? Any public comments? It doesn't look like it. Okay, minutes from January 14th.
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And treasurer's report from December.
Make a motion approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, a couple resolutions. Resolution 2016-04, a resolution appointing Thomas Hooper to the St. Genevieve Tourism Tax Commission.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 2016-05, a resolution appointing Timothy Pollak to the St. Genevieve Housing Authority Board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, old business, Bill number 4076, second reading.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a farm land lease agreement with Kurtz Farm LLC.
Move approved.
Second. Roll call.
Alderwoman Caldwell?
Yes.
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderman John Stevie?
Yes.
Alderman Joe Kirst?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Donald Stevie?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rosika?
Yes.
Eight yes votes. Bill number 4076 now becomes ordinance number 4018.
Thank you. Bill number 4077, second reading.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a farm land lease agreement with Mr. Joe Hacker.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Yeah, roll call.
Alderman Rosika?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Donald Stevie?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Joker?
Yes.
Alderman John Stevie?
Yes.
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderwoman Caldwell?
Yes.
Eight yes votes. Bill number seven, 4077 now becomes ordinance number 4019.
Thank you. Bill number 4078, second reading.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a farm land lease agreement with Michael and Adrian Naggar.
Move to approve.
Okay.
Randy? Roll call.
Alderwoman Caldwell?
Yes.
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderman John Stevie?
Yes.
Alderman Joker?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Donald Stevie?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rosika?
Yes.
Eight yes votes. Bill number 4078 now becomes ordinance number 4020.
Thank you. Bill number 4079, second reading.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a farm land lease agreement with Earl Valley.
Move approved. Second.
Charles.
Alderman Rosika?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Donald Stevie?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman John Stevie?
Yes.
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderwoman Caldwell?
Yes.
Eight yes votes. Bill number 4079 now becomes ordinance number 4021.
Thank you. Bill number 4080, second reading.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a farm land lease agreement with Joseph Seabert Jr.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Alderwoman Caldwell?
Yes.
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderman John Stevie?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Donald Stevie?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rosika?
Yes.
Eight yes votes. Bill number 4080 now becomes ordinance number 4022.
Bill number 4085, second reading.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the city of St. Genevieve and St. Genevieve County regarding 911 dispatching services for the calendar year 2016.
Move approved. Second.
Yeah, roll call.
Alderman Rosika?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Donald Stevie?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman John Stevie?
Yes.
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderwoman Beth Caldwell?
Yes.
Eight yes votes. Bill number 4085 now becomes ordinance number 4023.
Thank you. Bill number 4086, second reading.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the city of St. Genevieve and St. Genevieve County to assist in the funding and cooperation of the St. Genevieve County Recycling Center.
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Alderwoman Caldwell?
Yes.
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderman John Stevie?
Yes.
Alderman Joker?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Donald Stevie?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rosika?
Yes.
Eight yes votes. Bill number 4086 now becomes ordinance number 4024.
Okay. Don't have any new business this week? So any other business? If not, might I make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.